We're going to call to order our special meeting with the Board of Commissioners and County officials. It's 1:30. Thank you all very much for coming. Just to briefly set the stage, I know everyone is aware with the news over the last couple of days, at the very least, how important public records are and how important public records management is. And it's something that we need to make sure that we get right as an organization, as departments, and as individuals. The reason what we need today is to assess where we are and to solicit your feedback as to how the Board of Commissioners can support you as department heads in improving and shoring up your public records management and to hear from you what we can do to make sure that we collectively get this right. Commissioner Chaplin and I all very much appreciate everyone taking the time to be here today. We're looking forward to an honest and frank exchange. We're looking forward to hearing any ideas that you might have that will help us accomplish this goal. Again, I really appreciate the great attendance that we have today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Trish and Mark Nichols to lead our discussion.
Briefly, we had a work session on June 20th to talk about public records and where we go from here in terms of ordinances, policy updates, record specialists, and a number of ideas. And the Board determined at that time that it really was a county-wide effort that needed to happen and suggested that we have this meeting. And Mark is here.
So maybe I could make a few comments just to provide a greater context for the discussion. I think it is important to kind of reframe this a bit. And if we trace the history of this piece of legislation back to its origin, you know, back in the late '60s, the state of Washington did not have a Public Records Act or a Public Disclosure Act. It was by virtue of citizen initiative that this came into being. And initially, in the aftermath of the initiative effort, the legislature wound up codifying RCW 4217, which was known as the Public Disclosure Act. So those of you who've been practicing in the county government for some time probably hear that phrase used. That's what the act used to be called, the Public Disclosure Act. Roughly a decade ago, the legislature sought it to recodify the Public Disclosure Act into what is today's now-known Public Records Act, found in RCW 4256. This is Washington's Sunshine Law, so named because it's designed to shed light on the inner workings of government by forcing the government to account for really all records within its possession, understanding that those records show the citizens what we're doing inside their government. So it exists for a very good reason. Washington is not alone in having the Sunshine Law. Frankly, the PMA is another Sunshine Law, requiring meetings to occur openly and publicly as we have here today. And so I'd like to start by stating that the Public Records Act, as with the Public Disclosure Act, is a precursor. It identifies that public records compliance is an agency obligation. It doesn't speak in terms of it being for my purpose, a prosecutor function. It doesn't speak of it in terms of it being a juvenile function. It's an agency function. The organization that it is required to comply with the mandate of the act by and through its constituents. And that's all of the elected county officials, all of the appointed department heads, and frankly, each individual county worker who's providing service under taxpayer dollars. And so Clougham County, if I use that kind of as just an overview and a brief historical background, kind of the path that we traveled to get where we are, I think the county is at a point where, again, probably during the tender work-in consecutive years, revisiting its approach to public records. And I say that because we've had past work sessions with the Board, going back years, these are chronicle, we do searches through local news media, and find discussions on public records on the menu as it were. And we've tried different models as a county government to get our hands around this burden and this challenge that exists in the act. I remember years and years ago, the county was having difficulty complying with its mandate. And so there was a decision made to kind of transfer the function into the county auditor's office, because it seemed to make sense at the time that the auditor, as the official holder of county records, would be the best person to deal with the public record requests. That didn't turn out to be the case. It's really not a county auditor statutory function to oversee agency compliance with the act any more than it is the IT director's obligation to oversee organizational compliance or the sheriff's obligation to oversee organizational compliance. And so Patty, then auditor, she stuck with it for a few years. Practically speaking, I worked very closely with her on this. And when she would get requests that were fairly straightforward and easy to process, she'd process them. And if she had something more involved, she would quickly come to prosecutor's office and say, "Can you help me? I'm trying to make sure I get this right to the extent that I can." So we labored under that model for a period of time. And I think eventually she came back to the Board and just said, "I can't do this anymore. It's taking an awful lot of time. These things really can be untangled. While some are easy, some are very complicated. I'm not necessarily receiving the degree of support that I feel I need as the auditor when I ask other departments for records. I need to get..." So it was given back to the county. The prosecutor's office has always tried to step up and provide as much assistance as it can to the organization to help it meet its obligations under the act. Eventually, it became to be transitioned and it's, I think, our official county-wide designated public records officer, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the assignment has been given to Trish. And so she is our point person, organizational. And we're required to have one, it's important to note. So we have a public records officer entitled, and she does awesome work on that front. So I didn't mean that to come across in the end. A copy of that resolution in 2010 is at each one of your tables showing that that did occur. And so, you know, we have a position on paper that's stacked with the body. In reality, that's intended to oversee organizational compliance with all of the obligation of the Public Records Act. But what I can tell you, having dealt with this legislation for a part of a decade, is that this takes the entire organization, taking this seriously, being educated in order for us to have a chance to meet all of our obligations. Because if you think about all the different places in which your departments have records, they can be paper records, you know, something like this. If you have a scratch pad with doodles written on there, depending upon whether there's notes about the work that you're performing in your official capacity, that qualifies as a record. If you come into your office and you've got a voicemail on your telephone, technically, so long as it's there, it's a waiting file, it qualifies as a record. Emails are records. We all have records in storage, either inside of the county boardhouse or outside of it, say, or rented storage facilities. Those are all records that we're responsible for, accounting for, and turning over upon request. And so it becomes not too difficult to envision a scenario where somebody can make a request for all records addressing a particular topic. And the burden is then on us, organizationally, to make sure we find everything, follow the search, and review it, and produce it, either with or without redactions. And so it's an extraordinarily time-intensive process. I know that when I personally worked assisting different people within the organization in public records compliance, I would spend half-days, full-days, sometimes for weeks, for months on end, just really doing public records. And I've heard that from two of the civil division attorneys, Christina, who's in all the same squirm. She sat down and talked to me shortly prior to her departure and shared with me that she was spending four to five hours a day helping other departments process public record requests. That's really not her highest best view, just given that we were paying her. Brian has similarly spent an inordinate amount of time helping county departments comply with their obligations with the Public Records Act. And so I think we're at a point where we're in need of taking a critical look at our current practice and making some course adjustments to ensure that, you know, we have a framework in place that first and foremost meets the requirement of law and that practically speaking allows us to process requests in the way required. And it's, you know, viewed through bylines, it is extraordinarily time-consuming, expansive undertaking, because we're really not just dealing with having someone who will help the organization review records, create redaction laws, and send them out, but we're dealing with a need to have organization-wide training, for example. We're dealing with the need to have somebody help the organization inventory all of its records. And there are millions and millions of pages of records around here, inside the boardhouse and outside of it. We're dealing with the need to become more aggressive and proactive about managing our records. So what I mean by that is if you have old records that are outdated, don't serve any legitimate purpose anymore, and they're capable of being recycled under the state archives retention schedule, it's a good idea to recycle them. You free up space. You find yourself in a situation where you're no longer in possession of the record. And once you know you don't have it anymore, you don't need to go about the exercise of locating and reviewing in response to a request. Some records we want, if they bear significant issues relating to legislative history, those are records that even if we have the ability to destroy them under a state archives retention schedule, it leaves very good sense to hold on to them. And I tend to think of the types of records that might exist, say, in Mary Ellen's office, where she's dealing with land use issues, the legislative history for which can be very insightful and informative. Commissioner's office is another one where there's probably historical documents of significance that we want to keep, even though the law may allow us to dispose of them.
Mark, it's by me?
Yes.
There are also records that cannot be destroyed but are to be transferred to the state archives. And if you get a records request, you can refer them to the state archives, who will then provide the record from there. You don't have it in your possession. If you need it for some reason, they will provide a copy for you at charge. But then the onus is on them to produce the record if they get a request.
And so I'm really interested in speaking more to paper records, just to start the discussion. But if you were to speak with someone like our IT director, she would introduce you to the world of electronic records, emails, the text that you see, the metadata that you might not. She has huge amounts of information that she can access through a county server and probably other things on her internet. But we're also accountable for all of those records. So paper records are just one of many varieties from them. As we move into the digital age, should we come into a condition where we're holding on to video feeds? You think about body cams in law enforcement. One of the great challenges confronting law enforcement is a challenge to use body cams to record the work of law enforcement, to instill confidence in people that leave their jobs right, and to capture evidence at the same time, while simultaneously trying to figure out how to hold on to that footage, redacted if necessary, and comply for a request within the Public Records Act, it can become very difficult. So I think that leads up to our overview of current practice. And again, it does entail having Trish serve as our designated countywide public records officer. In theory, each department should have an appointed person who is a go-to person within that department. The reason we need to have a person within each department with whom Trish can communicate is because each department has access to and control of its own records. So she's got to have someone to call to make the ask of, "Do you have records relating to the following topic or category of topics? If so, please bundle them and send them to me so I can..." I think we have a rough framework established. I don't believe that we have a sufficient level of formalized training that's occurring across the entire organization. What I mean by that is in addition to those seated in this room today and in the audience who are employees, the Public Records Act doesn't just stop with elected officials and appointed departments. You have to start thinking in terms of county-created boards, county-created commissions, county-created committees. All of these entities or set entities need to be immersed in the same level of training so they're at least aware that there's this thing called the Public Records Act out there. And we have citizens who are being asked to participate in county advisory boards. You know, it's probably a good idea, and my best advice to the organization is to make sure that we have a training protocol in place so that, kind of like the state with the governor's office, if somebody signs up to volunteer service on a county to get a bit of work committed, you know, the obligation is for them within 90 days to complete some online Public Records Act, the PMA-based training, which is available on state attorney's website, and then just sign certifications in that fact. The idea is to harm them with enough information to know that they have to keep records, that people can request those records, that certain meetings have to be noticed to public in the way that the law requires. And so this is a very large-scale undertaking. Again, you can see gears turning and different folks heads here. There's different committees that work with your offices or your departments. You may be wondering whether they have training with this, probably not. This is a, again, needs to be dealt with in organized fashion. And it needs to be a, not just a one-time touch, but I think a, there needs to be a constant presence helping the organization to stay on task in meeting its obligations and goals and be able to prove its compliance with the requirements, if at all. So maybe I'll, I think that's kind of an overview of our current practice, at least as I understand it.
Great.
And I think I touched on proposed designation of public records specialists in each department. I think some have them, others may not, but it looks like that's next on the menu. And so maybe Mark could refer you on that.
Absolutely. Maybe a good place to start would be to just have us do a quick review of the list that's included with the packet here. Let us know if these are still, if this list is still valid. So if anyone wants to make a change in addition to this list, then yeah, we'll be tough.
I need to take.
Okay.
So Cindy Hansen, I would be the primary. Jake Jacobson, the secondary.
Okay. Any others out there?
I need to add Tess Teal onto the IT, and that's between me, between my name and Jane. But I need Jane on there still as well.
And it's Teal, T-E-E.
T-E-E, no.
Okay, and I saw someone else here.
Yes, my name would be there in place of mine.
Yeah. And do you want to have a backup for the secondary?
Yeah, the secondary, yeah.
I just assumed that the elected official would be the secondary on the line.
Okay, great.
Mark, if you could replace Christine with the primary's name.
Yes, I can. Any questions here?
I did, let's wait for my question.
Okay, let's see, I still need one off the desk. Okay, who? Okay.
I'd like to tell me the options, Tammy's first and then Tommy's.
And then for our office, can you put me first and then Tommy?
Yep. Hey, we're making progress. Anyone else for right now?
For the Treasures Office, Stephen's first, primary, and then Trish and Marsha.
Oh, you got it. All right. Thank you. Before we move on and start talking about training, that's going to be both training, special training for the identified public records designees, but also individual training for all county employees. Since electronic records are such a significant portion of what we're talking about, this is a large challenge, and IT department has been doing some research over at least the last year, if I remember correctly. We're looking at electronic content management.
I think it's actually.
Enterprise, enterprise content management software, which can help us organize and better access these electronic records. So perhaps that if you or Alan would like to take a couple of moments and just help give us an overview of what that system might look like so we can have that in mind as we're thinking about training and management, that would be great.
Well, let me start off a little bit with the email. Everybody knows that they contact IT for the email searches, and that's because it's not within your capability of diving all the way into our archives, which is what's called a sheriff's server. We've been keeping all of those email records, everybody's aware, for the last 10 years without any exception, so we can say all emails are there, period. So that if somebody says, "We need the emails from this particular date to this particular date," there's a couple of little windows where there was some glitches back in 2006, but other than that, we have the emails. That has caused a problem. As we're now 10 years down the road, you can guess how many emails there are sitting on our archive server. So for instance, it has not been unheard of, if you ask us to do a search for a common term, you're going to get a grundle of emails. So we've been working with the prosecuting attorney's office and Trish and others to say, "Okay, can we narrow it down a little bit as to who, what, when, where, so that we can get your responsive records?" One that took my team a couple of days at least. I have half of my team here so that they're all hearing this and it can be there to support you. So just so you know, it's not just me, it's my entire team that actually is supporting the public records process. But the emails, doing all of these searches, it's not been unheard of to, the last one gave Trish 10,000 emails to go through literally in response to one of the public records requests. One of the ones that we turned over to the sheriff's department, and I'm sure the sheriff remembers it, it was 80,000 records that we turned over. 80,000 records.
Who was that?
I don't remember, I just remember that it was Chris James, I think, that we sent that one to her, and so we were trying to...
That was a long time ago.
It was, but imagine what that search today would produce, more than 80,000. So the problem is, is it's not that we don't have the records, it's trying to get our arms around the records. And that's the big key. Plus, we have to provide it in its original format so that you have what the metadata is. And Alan, Alan, are you here?
I'm hiding.
You're hiding. Alan has been helping us and been doing a little bit of research into some of the ECM. You'll see it out there as document management tools, enterprise content management, information management, it's all the same thing of how do you get your arms around all of this data? You'll see it in articles, it's called big data. Well, it's big data for a reason. We have terabytes upon terabytes upon terabytes of data out there. So in order to try and do a search, we can do it easily, in quotes, on email, but then we just give it to you and you look at it and go, "Oh, boy." Then you have to go through it all. As far as your files and stuff are concerned, that falls into the department's ball court because you know where you stored it. There are certain permissions on certain file folders and things like that that in order for us to do that search, we have to elevate our rights in order to be able to do that search. And we just assume the departments were responsible for their own files. They know where they have it, they know what they've called it, where it's stored, et cetera, to a certain point. In order to help that, what we've been doing is looking at some tools to put into your guys' hands to help you with that search that is a little faster than doing a Windows search. Right now, you go down to your start button, you hit search, and you search the file folder. That can take you a while. It can take us a while, even doing it from the server. What I'd like to have Alan show us is just a brief overview of one we've been looking at. Did you need one? What we've been looking at is a tool to allow the departments to actually be able to search. But one of the things it's going to take is it's still personnel discipline. We can give you all the technology in the world, but unless you categorize, unless you take steps to actually manage your records and be able to save your emails, because we can get rid of eventually, I don't know who's going to go through all that historical 10 years worth of email data, but we can get rid of the email archive servers down the road. We're looking at possibly down the road with the upgrade to our email server, which by the way, that's missed most of you, but yes, we have been working towards that too, that it's easier for us to be able to archive the emails, certain emails on that, but it still is not going to provide a consolidated data search. And that's what I think you're looking for, if I'm not mistaken, is some way of doing a consolidated search of every data record that you have out there. That's electronic. Paper's not going to reach out and say, "Well, that's piece of paper." Alan, you want to take it away with this little demonstration of M-File?
Okay, I think so. What I'd like to do is just step back a little bit and explain metadata. You guys are starting to start hearing this term more and more. What is metadata? Metadata, the definition is data about data. Doesn't tell you all the time. But data about data is basically a representation of what the data is. It's basically the history of the data. That's basically why when they do a records request and they ask for all pertaining metadata, the reason why is they want the history of the data as well as the data itself.
Yeah, it's information about who sent it, who received it, what IP address it came from, you know, all of that electronic information about that record, and that's all it is.
And I won't get into huge detail, but I'll just take your Outlook client right now. If you look at a message, metadata on this message that's visible to you is such as the subject, who it's from, the time and date that it comes in. But if you open that message and then go to the properties of that message, right down here is the Internet headers of that message. What that basically is, is the routing path of that email. It tells you everything. For instance, when you guys get spam and you send it to the health businesses, "I don't want this spam anymore." The reason why we want you to forward the message as an attachment is because we need this metadata in order to put in filtering in our filter technology in order to block it. Everything in this Internet header says the origin of the message, all the way to the receipt within your inbox, or in our case, our extension. So that's an example of metadata. If we go out and we look at a file on your computer, let me see. Oh, here, picture of my kid. So besides the picture of the kid, at the bottom of the screen, you're going to see metadata that's associated with it. Besides the name of the file, you see that you can specify the date it was taken, you could add a tag to it. It gives you the dimensions of the file, as well as the size and the JPEG formatting. Now, some even tell you the camera model that actually took the image. So you could actually even know what camera actually took that image. If we go to, there's another one, which is another JPEG. But anyways, that's an example of metadata that you... But anyways, that's an example of metadata that you typically wouldn't understand about a file that was on your system. So when we get into what is an enterprise content management system, what we're really talking about is a place or a repository for storing something. Your clerks of the Superior Court use a similar enterprise content management system for court records. They use a product called Ombis for their court records, which is basically, they have an image and then they tie some metadata or file, you know, basically case information and stuff like that gets tied to the image and then it's saved off into the system. M-Files is simply another option of a metadata-driven enterprise information management system, which is basically a level above just a simple content manager. And I won't go into what it can do, but it's got things like processing workflows, things like that that you can do. So as records are created, how does that record pass through your department or organization? So this particular software embeds in Windows Explorer, so it basically becomes a drive letter on your system. When you open that up, you will get a graphical interface into the system and you'll see things that basically gives you the ability to search for those things. For instance, I have some traditional files here. So for instance, if I come in here and I say, well, I'm looking for print, I'm going to get one that I've already done before, I'm looking for files that had to do with print notification. And search, and boom, that's basically what an enterprise content management system does, is a lot of background indexing. It can basically go through the file, all the text in the file becomes part of an index search, characteristics of the file that you can actually assign to the file. And it's more about filing by what something is rather than where it is on the system. Rather than doing your traditional folder expansion tree in a normal file to go and find a file somewhere out on your J drive or the K drive, what this particular system will do is just allow you to throw it into a bucket and add tags to it. And those tags can basically be what it is. Tell me about this document that you're putting in the system. And some of those things can answer into questions that, you know, Trish will get into later with records people about how, you know, retention schedules, things like that. You can tie to these things as they go into the system. So I'm not sure how much further you want me to go.
Show them the look of the metadata in the preview of that file.
Yeah, so if I go in and I'm looking at, this particular thing was an email message that I basically took out of Outlook and saved it in here. So the metadata of that file is available to me over in this system.
It's the raw file that has not been modified at all by M-Files, but you can tell it to put your emails into a specific email. So in the case of the one that you were talking about, Tricia, retirement notifications, they don't need to be saved in M-Files, but something about a contract does. And you can put it into M-Files, you can put a tag on it that says what it is, you can put it into a project, but when you put it into M-Files, you can delete it out of Outlook, and if we don't have the archive server running in the background, once it's deleted out of Outlook, it's deleted out of Outlook. Unless you put it in M-Files, if it's in M-Files, just because you deleted it out of Outlook doesn't mean it's gone away, it's over in M-Files for you to be able to search later. So all of the stuff that we don't need to keep, all the transitory records that we don't need to keep can be gone.
It doesn't mean that you can't put them into M-Files, and that was what I was going to get into in the next step, which is basically, if we actually went with this product, I was just going to set up an example. Basically, what I did here was M-Files stores in what are called document vaults, or basically your vault. So in this case, I've got a B O C C vault here, and as you can see in the document, I took the core schedule and went ahead and put the core schedule into here as far as the different kinds of records that are in the system.
The core schedule is the State Archives' common records, I don't even know what that O stands for, but it's common records for all agencies, such as we all do correspondence, we all have contracts. So when he's referring to core, it's a type of records retention schedule that the State Archives has created that is general in nature, that is common records for all agencies.
And then there's specific schedules for like the sheriff's office and public health and things like that that are important.
So what happens out on, so this is the administrative level, this is where the people who would set up the department records and stuff would involve it. Our end users basically still see it as just a drive letter on their system. And an example of that would be is that if you're in Word, here's that core document, if I wanted to save it, I can basically say, save to M-Files. And when I select that, I will basically go through an interview process for how I'm going to save this into the ECM. And you'll basically go through an interview process, and I could say right now that I don't have this set up for the B O C C vault, I have this set up for just a little thing that I was playing with. But you can see when I classify, a change order is a document class, just like those teamwork files and things. You know what I'm doing?
Well, let's not get too into the weeds.
Correct, okay.
Because we haven't finalized going with this product, but we do kind of like this particular product. But like I said, it's more, and this is where I'll turn it back over, it's more the idea of the fact we need to get our arms around everything and we're trying to find a tool to get our arms around everything, but in order to do that, we have some licenses purchased for Trish to play with as well as the sheriff's department, since they are the big ones. I can also purchase a license for the prosecutor attorney's office so they can look. But right now, it would be just for their drive letters. The advantage of this one over Laserfish or some of the others that we have talked about is we have to get everything into Laserfish. M-Files, the one thing that we really kind of like about this one is we can continue operating as we are today, but have the ability to do immediate search on your drive letters. At this point in time, that's kind of where I'd like to leave at, but it's trying to get our arms around everything.
I only wanted to say one other piece that I understand about it is the public, the public side of it, is there is a publishing side. So when you do put documents in it, if documents are open for public use, you can actually assign a meta tag to it that says it's a public document and that there's actually a web portal into the system that the general public can go in and do their own searches. So that's just a down-the-road type piece, but in reality, looking for something that's a full picture. Well, before we move on, does anyone have any concerns or comments or questions that we're at right now, what we've talked about so far?
Yes, just to add a kind of a comment, as I'm listening to this, I don't know if this is making a lot of sense to people, but I'm kind of a visual person, I think in pictures. And if any of you are wondering, so why can't we just Google to get this information? Why can't we just Google it? I mean, you Google everything. You want a restaurant, you type in Italian restaurants and all of a sudden you've got a gazillion choices there. Well, why can't IT just do that? Well, what Alan's talking about is putting together a solution for that where, you know, Google has people, hundreds and probably thousands of people, that all day, they sit there and they have programs and things that scrub and look for those meta tags, so you're able to type in Italian restaurant, squint, and it comes up with something. That's the solution that we're trying to get together here, is to basically turn, you know, something like this to make it that simple. But each department is going to have to, you know, tag their files, is this an Italian restaurant, is this a Mexican restaurant, you know, what kind of, what flavor is your data, so that when you do the searches later, you'll be able to pull it up. And that's kind of.
And certainly, one of our hopes in addressing this in a systemic, comprehensive way like this is that we have a good chance at improving our system such that, A, the public has more immediate access to as much information as possible, and B, having that access and making it easily searchable or making it available to search engines might help some people at least, if not many people who make public records requests, they might be able to find that information themselves. And so it would be wonderful to get to the point where we're giving people the ability to answer their own questions, at least as a first step. And some additional work ahead of time on our part now will theoretically be alleviating more work at a later date. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about where we stand right now?
Well, just to clarify, it wasn't that I'm saying that this would immediately go out to Google, but if you think of us in the county as trying to, you know, Google our data, do our own searches, that's why it's important that we take the time to tag the files ahead of time, to have that metadata there so that we can search it, or search ourselves.
Excellent. And only one other comment, and it's really, we'll stop talking about this and really talk more about the fact that there's a lot of scrubbing of our information that needs to occur right now. In other words, our records management or records retention is probably more of a focus right now because there's such a sprawl of information that is currently in our system to even try to bring it into this system is going to be a huge, huge task at its current level. So understanding the retention schedule and things like that is really where a lot of people's focus needs to be even before implementing something like this. Well, that's a good segue into talking about training.
I have a question, because most of our files tomorrow are online already, and I'm under the understanding, even if a public records request is done, that files out there on the Internet, I'm still required to supply that information. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
So my question about this is if they have the ability to access it and they still want to do a public records request, we still have to install it, is that correct?
Yes, under the Act, any record in the organization's possession of any department, any public or anywhere, regardless of why we have it, even if you don't want it, has to be produced for inspection or a copy upon request. The only question is whether it goes on the door or whether we redact a portion to report to law. So yes, if we have it, even if a citizen can get it through Google and they ask it from us, we can't just say, go look at Google, it's available. We have the obligation to locate it, review it, and release it with or without redactions timely.
I often respond to those with, you're curious to lead to the document.
And it usually does work, because I think in the cases, we have been buried in public records requests and that maybe it's intentional in a lot of cases. So that was my question, because I understand why their assessor was sued over that very thing. It was all online, but he did not produce something that was available online and even if he had to, but he did. And it was available, it's out, it was a public information already that was on his website.
And that's, maybe if I could take a moment, that touches on an important issue. You know, it's such an important topic when we talk, speak in terms of transparency, both with respect to how we meet and do business in settings like this, and also in showing public records to people. The Public Records Act has evolved over the course of time and been interpreted by the courts over time in a way that is really presenting strict liability to public agencies. And what I mean by that is, it doesn't matter if you, it's inadvertent oversight, you could have gotten too busy and you just failed to do something and it resulted in you not turning the record over. The Act doesn't really care. It doesn't look to see if you intentionally withheld a record, it just asks the question of, was the record in the agency's possession and was it turned over, yes or no? The answer is no, you're in trouble. And under the Public Records Act, this is why it matters to, I will submit each and every one of you, if a person sues a public entity, it doesn't matter if it's the state, a county, a city, special purpose district, or an alleged violation of the Public Records Act, you know, keep in mind, number one, they have a one-year applicable statute of limitations within which to do this. So if a person makes a records request in early, you know, 2016, the agency processes it, produces a last and final installment, you know, say on the seventh day of 2016, January 7th. The person can wait, you know, almost a year, and if they take issue with the response, believe that a redaction was improperly made, believe that they discovered a record that is in the county's possession even though it wasn't turned over, they have the ability to file suit. When they do that, almost a year has already elapsed. And the reason that's significant to note is because if they prevail in their suit, not only are they entitled to receive reimbursement for their attorney's fees and costs, which can be extraordinarily expensive, but courts, trial courts are authorized to impose daily penalties. And it used to be the case that the daily penalty that could be imposed was between, essentially zero and $100 per day. And the courts would exercise their discretion, and if it was a circumstance where a public entity had inadvertently, just due to mere oversight, but with the best of intentions nonetheless, just failed to produce something, a mean and honest to goodness mistake, the court might find that there was good faith, but nonetheless a mistake and impose maybe a dollar a day penalty. At the other end of the spectrum, if the court determined that the agency knew as to the existence of a record, or should have known and didn't take reasonable action to turn it over, they might gravitate towards the $100 per day penalty. And again, if a year has elapsed between the time to file a suit and the imposition of the penalty, you can see how this might add up. Things became considerably more dicey recently when the State Supreme Court decided a case called Wade's East Side Gun Show versus maybe City of Seattle or something along those lines. But in that case, our State Supreme Court went further than any court has, and what it now allows is for trial court judges to impose not just per-day penalties ranging between zero and $100, but per-day, per-page penalties ranging between zero and $100. And so if you're alleged to have improperly redacted one page of records, one-year sues, passive record lawsuits filed, the court finds that you made the redactions with, you know, for a pretty decent reason, but you got it wrong, maybe they're going to impose $5 a day penalty for that one-year period and tack on attorney's fees and costs. That'll hurt. But in the Wade's East Side Gun Showcase, you know, if you find yourself sitting on top of 100 or 1,000 or 10,000 records, even if the court finds that it's $5 per page per day, you can do the math, multiply this, and what local governments are now coming to grips with over the last few months is that, you know, a liability that may have presented in the range of, you know, $10,000 hypothetically overnight went to potentially, you know, $10,000 or maybe $100,000, just depending upon the number of pages that were actually shipped in a pending suit. So it's very, very high stakes. It's a fairly inseparable process. Again, you've got penalties to contend with on the one hand and attorney's fees and costs on the other, but the legislature's quite serious about public records compliance for local governments. Interestingly, they've exempted themselves from the Act, which is a continuing feature. So a whole separate discussion, let's go to the truth.
You talked about redactions. Who makes redactions? Are you the only one who makes redactions?
No, I mean, we make them for records in the prosecutor's office. We get asked for assistance by other county departments, but that's what I'm saying is that, you know, for well over a decade, I think the county organization's been limping along, and what's happened is that practically speaking, individual county departments, you know, perhaps due to a lack of training, perhaps due to a lack of personnel, they may not understand the need to redact. There's a specific way you have to go about doing it. Every time you redact information, you need to have a corresponding redaction law that identifies the record, things like the author, recipient, date, the reason for which you made the redaction, you need to provide a brief explanation. This is your collective, individual obligation and responsibility. We do it all the time in the prosecutor's office for records requested. We do it all the time in the prosecutor's office for records requested from our offices. It's no different when records requests occur as to your offices, and that's one of the areas in which we need to have training.
I would say that you're headed toward creating a monster that's going to be impossible to control. Seventeen departments or however many we have. I think there's so much arcane voodoo knowledge associated with this area that it's going to be hopeless getting every department to the point where particularly departments that may not deal with more than one or two records requests a year. I think it's going to be very hard to get each department up to a level where they know what to redact, what not to redact, and how to do a redaction if you think you need to do a redaction. So it really seems to me that, you know, and I could easily take the states, it's not affecting me at all because it's part of the law, but I think we're heading to the point where I think rather than decentralize all this, there needs to be some effort to centralize how we're responding to the records requests, at least with respect to things like redaction, things like missing, they need to redact something, and then essentially sending something out that should have been redacted but wasn't. I mean, I think there's some difficult calls there that individual departments, I know quite often do refer to them, probably should as a routine. I think this organization is getting the sigh of complexity, and the Public Records Act is also getting the degree of complexity that we would be better off to have somebody who is the guru in public records responses and know and understand all the pitfalls, rad traps, and recent court rulings, and all the stuff that might affect how or whether we respond to a specific request. That centralizes the response, just so that we make sure we get it right before it goes out, because apparently we didn't get it right recently, and it's pretty costly when we go with this thing.
I'd like to jump in on that one a little bit, because that was the idea behind, over several discussions that Mark talked about in the beginning of the history, attempting to do it first with the auditor, and then it didn't work, and then moving it back in the office in the B O C C with Trish. And we've heard the idea of hiring people in the prosecutor's office to do just this. But what we ran into, I mean, one, there's a tremendous, pragmatically, there's a tremendous cost in time, effort, training, searching, doing all these things that some departments weren't interested or weren't able. I don't think anybody's not genuinely willing to try and do their best, but they're saying, "I have other priorities. I've got to do the business of my office." And to the extent that this god-awful burden of time, effort, training, and responsibility eliminates, prevents me from doing my primary duty that I was hired to do, or elected to do, or swore on oath that I would have done, unless you provide me with two, three, make your own number, of new staff, and I'm not going to do. And so we heard a lot of that. Trish, as she has been trying to organize, and we've been sending her to specialized training, she's been offering trainings and not been getting a lot of people coming to the trainings in some cases. We had pretty good this last one, I think only a couple of departments didn't come to this last one. But she would send out requests and was for information and was ignored. It's come to the point, I think that, like Mark said, we've got to elevate this, and you're right, the recent case that we just have, and boy, let me tell you, it is, I mean, as bad as this sounds, and as much angst and heat and fire as we're all talking about this little case, it is piddling. When I meet with my fellow administrators, and matter of fact, just before this meeting I met, we have a quarterly meeting with the administrative leaders of, they're all invited, they all come, of all of these cities, counties, school districts, fire districts, municipal districts in Kitsap, Jefferson, and Loudoun County. And we just got done meeting before this quarterly meeting, and I can tell you, the city manager from Bainbridge talked about an issue that he had two years ago that they ended up settling for more than half a million dollars from simply one of the council persons who was getting emails at home on his home personal computer and didn't disclose. And it ended up being a, he said more than half a million dollar award, or actually it ended up being a settlement because the award was threatened to be two or three times that. It's becoming a huge, huge deal. And so the commissioners and Trish and Mark and I at that work session were saying, "Yes, we think one defense is to have this centralized training, standardized set of operations." But I have heard from some of you, and I'll let you speak for yourselves, recently that you're not interested in centralizing. So it's a difficult situation for us. We have gone off the line.
I'll speak, I'm interested in centralizing. But it scares the kind out of me, somebody just asking me a question, whether it's actually a public records request or not that I treated as such, because I have heard these poor stories over simple little requests that I've gotten out of hand.
But there's a logical other side of the story, Sheriff. Do you have some?
As the largest provider of public disclosure requests in the county, somewhere north of 1,000 requests a year, and those are just the ones that we get in writing, and probably another three or four thousand plays where we should just be claiming the county's wanting information that is publicly disclosed and covered. I'm not interested in a centralized organization here. I have adequate manpower, I have adequate software to do that. My concern about it becoming central for me is that the fact is, is the vast majority of our requests are handled by our county or counter personnel right then and right there, on the paperwork trail and the muscle fuss going about it. If I were to bring in either third party or refer them somewhere else, I couldn't respond with the rapidness that I do respond, and that's why I have so little problems with public disclosure, the vast majority of them are taken care of. Those that do come in as written requests, we have a little bit of trialing here, we have the web Q and A software that we have is working fine. I feel like we have a peer-to-peer relationship with Trish as well as with prosecuting attorney. We rarely burden them with issues unless it comes up. So I can't speak for anyone else, but I'm not at all interested in a centralized thing, simply because by the volume, I would lose control and I think we are, we're doing okay. Alice, did I miss anything?
No, Bill, if I may, the sheriff's office is one of the few departments that their people that are dealing with public records requests have extensive training, that you have two or three different people that go to records training yearly. So you have really well-trained staff to do their jobs. I don't think that's true for other departments.
I get it. The question was asked, if there's anyone that doesn't, I want to opt out of anything larger.
And I think that would be a reasonable way to go. I mean, if the sheriff has got a system that is working, well, by all means, don't fix it. But I'm arguing for the notion that there are quite a few departments that public records, promoting public records requests is kind of a rare event. And each time you have to scratch your head and think, "Okay, now I will have to do about this." And the potential for screwing it up is probably quite a bit larger than this for Bill and some of these other departments. So it does seem to me that we're getting to a level of complexity that would benefit from, maybe excluding the sheriff, but the other departments having access to some dedicated individual that is the leader in, you know, saying, "Okay, you need to search for these records, you need to bring them to me, I need to look at them and see what, if anything, needs to be reacted, and alternatively, what shouldn't be reacted and maybe maybe is," and stuff like that. It just seems to me that we're in a, departments that don't deal with these, as Bill says, we benefit from that kind of thing.
Well, I was just going to suggest, I understand why we can't have both. Why can't we have people that are experienced, have the staff and the resources to be able to conduct it on their own by themselves, but we also need to have departments that, you know, need to be included in the centralizing. That was a valid suggestion.
You know, I think ultimately that is likely to be a really good suggestion, and perhaps this would be a good time. I think, I want to make sure that everyone has a good understanding of the landscape, what is out there, so that as department heads, you know, maybe you already know, or maybe once, you know, maybe once we've talked about it, once you may want to think about it a little bit, what would be best for your department. And so as a piece of that, Trish, maybe you can talk a little bit about if, what kind of training is available if necessary for public records designees? What would that entail on an annual basis? And then maybe Rich, if you can talk a little bit about what kind of annual training opportunities we might be able to provide for our employees? I think that should maybe fill in a couple of the last missing pieces of basic information here.
With this, with the public records designees, there's actually something in state law that requires training every four years. So they would get more intensive training, and that's usually just through the Secretary of State's website, I believe. There is a training, records management, kind of public records place there.
So we're talking about online, an online training module, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
They actually have both.
What's that?
They have both. We're on there with our elections quite a bit. They have the webinars, there are many more and more webinars, because people can't leave their offices to do that anymore. But they also are doing the regional trainings too, which are, sometimes they're just a couple hours, sometimes they are making them a full day and putting quite a few different kinds of trainings in there, so that they're going to be gone, you want us to do a day and then.
That's one of the ones that I brought here, was the training that we have, that first of the bunch. I talked to Debbie briefly about how we might do a webinar, if we wanted to do a webinar and bring a bunch of people in here to look at things, because one of the things that they do is one on, it's called something like Electronic Records Orgie. Email Orgie, there you go. The getting, I think, all staff trained to understand what a record is, what you keep, what you don't need to keep, to be able to manage their emails, so that when they get an invite to a retirement party or something else, that they can delete it and know that it's okay, that it's gone, and some of those types of things. So I'm, you know, one of the things that I talked to Rich about is how difficult would it be to have a link or some sort of something on the required county website for training so that everybody in the county gets training, understands what a public record is, so that they can delete things electronically with confidence and manage how they do that, and then more intense training for the designated officers and departments.
And then going over that point, Brenda's been doing some research, we checked with Vivid Learning Systems, which is the one that provides the countywide training course now, which all employees are required to complete every year during that time period, that they have agreed to, and they can put a training program into the same module system that we use now. I think that the decision would be is to finding out what the level of training is that we need for this organization, what are the components of it, they can even incorporate PowerPoint material. So we could put that together, and that could be a mandated training for every employee just like we do now for the annual training that comes through. So we're able to do that, we just needed to refine what exact training we want to have done, and quite possibly for the type of level that the person's involved with. So if they're at a higher level where they're doing redaction, is there some redaction training? At the lower level, what is a record, what do I do with it, how do I process it? So we have a capability, it's in our system, and they're agreeable to put that together. So it sounds overall like the training isn't necessarily going to be a tremendous burden, it's just something that we'll have to pay attention to on an annual basis.
Mark, I would add to that, but perhaps more so than any other area of law, courts are interpreting the Public Records Act frequently, and it's a never-ending target. So if there's ever a subject matter in relation to which training once a year is not enough, is it? All right. If I do, you know, wave a wand and recognize that first valley tide would be like quarterly, because with the number of case holdings coming down, where courts are expanding the reach of the law, interpreting the statute differently than ever before, you know, the, what's acceptable in January of a given year by way of public records practice with respect to redacting and filtering information, may be outdated by June of that same year. And if you're just doing annual training, maybe you pop your pants down effectively, and I'm not sure that the court's going to necessarily care that you can train once a year to be doing something more frequent. All right.
Sir, Joel, you first.
Well, that's a good reason why in a department my size, I would push for a centralized format, because we get so few every year, we spend more time training for something that we're really not going to be impacted by very much, because, you know, we already have quite a lot of training requirements on a desk, comma, says it is. The new training programs in fact, I've heard comments on already. So for those of you that haven't taken them yet, very, but anyway, we can train and train and train, but I would be in favor of a centralized.
And one problem regarding what you're saying about centralized repositories, the end users, all of your staff and you folks, need to know how to use it, because you're the ones tagging the documents for retention. So that's the big deal. That's why you need the training.
And I actually, just build on that. When you talk about centralized, you're talking centralized for the actual searching aspect, because you as an individual, creating a record such as an outgoing email, you're actually responsible for the disposition of that record through its retention cycle. So it's not, when you talk about centralizing, the only thing that I can think you can really centralize is probably a search criteria, but even then, if you centralize it, you still have to follow that central body's, what they need as far as how you record it, because otherwise how are they going to know how to search you? They don't know your business process.
It's like having a secretary, and you say, "Well, okay, I want somebody to handle all of my tagging, my memos and my files." Okay, well, that's great, but at the same time, you need to tell her, "Okay, I want this put in a personnel file, or I want this put in my accounting file," or, you know, it's like having a personal assistant. That personal assistant can file it for you, and they can go get it for you, but you still have to tell them what it is. And so that's, when you have a centralized system, that system may be able to, you know, hold the documents and retain them for you, but you're still going to have the end user identify what is it and how long, or do I need to keep it?
So just to clarify, when I talk about centralizing, I'm really not talking about the record keeping aspect of this. I think individual departments need to know what records they need to keep and need to know where they're kept and where they can be found and all that stuff. I'm not really thinking that can be efficiently centralized in any meaningful way except for the electronic view, is the right key. But when I'm talking about the idea of centralizing, I'm thinking more in terms of making sure that we log in, the request for our public information, make sure we track, how fast it goes, the kind of stuff that Trish does, make sure we know. it goes, that kind of stuff that Trish does, make sure we know which department or departments are likely to have the records, making sure those departments know what they need to be looking for, and then for repeat providing it, making sure that somebody who understands that ever-changing scenery in courts with regard to this Public Records Act, that are screening our response to make sure it's right, make sure it's appropriate, make sure it's correctly redacted, or make sure that the stuff that shouldn't be redacted isn't, and stuff like that. So centralizing the organization of the response and the flowing information to the requesters, kind of what I'm talking about, centralizing, not the actual records and data, and stuff like that.
I believe that was the goal at the beginning of the year.
That was.
That as the public records officer, the individual departments who had responsive records, I would reach out to, say, Lori, and say, I've got a records request, they're looking for this, and Lori would say, okay, I can have that to you in 10 days, or whatever. I would do the response to the requester. Lori would get the record to me, I'd look to see if anything needed to be redacted or whatever, and if that hasn't happened, I've still, and the sheriff's office was exempted from this, because of what you've got in place already. Somewhere, as far as I know, individual departments are still handling their own public records requests, and things aren't coming to me.
And if they all were coming to you, I suspect you would find it hard to handle as just other duties is required, particularly when it gets into some of the legal issues of, you know, what are the recent rulings, and stuff like that.
Yeah, but should we have part of that centralization, an attorney that is dedicated to nothing but public records and redaction and understanding and getting our response put together?
You know, these are, they're the key.
Well, Trish, several meetings ago, we talked about, we were talking about this, that as we did it in our own department, that if we did have one to, like, shoot an email to you for just a running record, so I think I can pretty clearly say, we haven't had it since that time. Are you getting those departments that may have had public records requests?
But do you know the departments that had requests, that you're not getting them?
Well, Andy, I've got a couple from you, and I think I ended up processing those for you.
Yeah, the difficulty is, sometimes we get them through email, sometimes we'll get them through a phone call, sometimes we'll get them at the counter, and they come to us in all different manner. And so sometimes it's just hard to figure out, is this a public records request or not? And then, if it's something that's fairly easy, we can handle it in just a few minutes and send something back. And so it's, every case is a little different. And so some of the harder ones, more difficult ones, will communicate, the easier ones, we seem to try and take care of ourselves, because otherwise, it gets more time consuming.
I'll tell you, we're seeing more, and Trish has found a few of these, I'm hearing about them again with my peers, we're seeing more of this little cottage industry going on out there, people trying to make money off of public records requests, mistakes by governments. We're seeing people that are coming in and making public record requests for different departments, the same request, and then comparing the documents they get, and if they're not identical, then suing, because one of the departments didn't give the right information, and then settle, right? So there's the other reason that having one person getting a log, and being responsible to answer, and being, you know, that go ahead and get the information from all four departments, and then that person puts it together and makes sure one responsive request for all the departments is the same, and is, has all the information, and sends it out, to try and stop that.
Mark, the other piece I have, and not to go into great detail on this, but it affects Superior Court, District Court, and General Services, is the Public Records Act up until January 1st, differently applied, Supreme Court, passed GR 31.1, so changed some things for Superior, the Courts, Superior Court, District Court, including General Services. So we're under GR 31.1, not Public Records Act.
And GR 31.1 requires us to keep our log, I can set it wrong.
So just count the awareness that the Courts, there's a different system for our public records.
Barbara gave me, Chris Johnson gave me text that when I get a record request for a court record, I send them an email that, and it basically says, you can get your things here, and I send them a link, and if you have any questions, I have this phone number, and guide them through the process. So the Superior Court records are easy to do. I would point out that Snohomish actually has text on their public records website piece that talks about Superior Court and GR 1, 3.1, that actually talks about it, so that people know where to go. Right now, I'm giving a lot of emails with links.
We just have a couple minutes left, and we're getting ready to move on to the next steps, but I see there's one member of our audience who would like to say something, so please be brief.
I will, I will try to be very brief. Coming through the financial industry and the legal industry, because I've dealt with these industries, especially the regulatory agencies and beautiful things, I want to commend everybody here for the questions that you've been asking, and the discussion you've really done a lot of really good things. My suggestion would be that you do have a central point, at least for knowing when requests come in. Now, I know that your county doesn't get bought in for trying to handle requests very quickly, because I've asked for a few things, and as soon as I ask for it, I get it. If it's verbal, maybe you don't have to keep a record of that, but if you get it in writing, that, you really do need to keep a record of, but develop your own policy as you will with that. My suggestion would be it's up to the individual departments to respond to them, and then confirm back to your central point that it has been completed. And, you know, keep a rec, keep a copy of everything that goes out, and make reports, possibly on a monthly basis, to the county commissioners of the number of document requests that come in, the number that have been completed, the numbers that are pending, so the commissioners have a chance to see how much of an impact this is. You know, do you have to consider adding more staff? What's been talked about here, the penalties that could accrue, they could be huge, so again, you may want to add more staff to it. Just one last thing, I'm going to give you the last one. Electronic records, in this electronic age, and I'm a dinosaur, create all sorts of new problems. I would strongly recommend that the county adopt policies dealing with record requests, so that county employees and elected officials only use county-issued electronic devices, telephones, computers, et cetera. Anything completed on those are public records. I would strongly suggest also that your policy state, employees, and if you can do it to elected officials, are subject to penalties if they put any type of electronic record on personally-owned electronic devices. You can't respond to records request otherwise. It's got to be on devices from the county, and how your IT department tracks that information, I leave up to people that are much more to take. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Can we go back to training for a moment?
Yes.
You were saying how involved that would be? You were asking about the records management component.
In terms of the training, I think we have to determine what we want to train on, the frequency of the training, those kinds of things, and if some consensus could be put together for what this organization's needs are, then we can package that into training, make sure this is legally viable, package that into a training component, we do it annually, but put it into place so that we can, we can launch it, and certainly it would be required, training, just like some of the other, like Joel's referring to, the training that's required, that the department directors are selecting for their people, but make it part of that component, so it's in the same system.
And something as simple as just a link to the Secretary of State's website for the records management component, I think would be sufficient, and a very, very basic requirement.
Yeah, and I understand that, but what we want to do is to verify that the training's been completed for litigation purposes, in other words, we want to be able to sign off, that's why we go through this vivid training process, to show that, to show you know, to show that you have knowledge, that you read the material, and that you're functional in what you do. And that's, that's really a critical piece, I think, to help us in those cases.
So we have a number of, a number of next steps. Here's what I've captured so far. One is, we need to develop a plan for reviewing and destroying when possible, old records that need to be pulled, that's going to be both a paper record component and an electronic record component. Those will both entail different processes, but they'll both be equally large and very important pieces of work. We're going to have to determine a training schedule and routine for department designees. We're going to have to determine a training schedule and routine for employees. We're going to have to determine a training schedule and routine for board and committee members and organizational volunteers. Sheriff, what do pilots do before they take off every single time?
It's good to have you all over time.
Maybe it's a checklist. Maybe not pilot children applying as long as you have, I don't know. But I know that, and this is, this is something that, as I don't remember if you suggested, perhaps we've come up with, as a helpful tool for when, you know, when a department or when the organization receives a records request, what do you do first? What do you do second? What are all the steps to make sure that you're not missing something? What's the time frame?
When you process it.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do other departments not have a form that you fill out when you get a public records request?
But sometimes, that's not how they come in.
No, I mean, if someone calls you with a request, I mean, is there something that you log out? What we do, and we're working on private security on this, and we came up with a form after, this is a big deal, this is a big deal, I don't want to guess this. We, everything that we get requested in our office goes on a request form. If it's a copy of, you know, volunteer picnic in April, who attended? Well, we do the form, we date it, and we submit, we can re-answer the request that way, and, right, so we have copies of all that stuff. So it's interesting to me that there's no log of things, or at least it doesn't sound like there's a log of things that are coming in to everybody's department.
Even if I get a phone call to have a request, I'm drawn to the forms and I hear a phone call at all.
And what you're getting at is really important, because it's, it's clear that ultimately, our system is going to be a hybrid system, where departments like the sheriff's department will handle their own requests, other departments might need some help, they'll might use a centralized service, but whether, regardless of how that's happening, we should all be using the same process, and collecting the same information, cataloging it in the same way, and, and developing that consistency, and that's, you know, that's a really important piece of what we're talking about.
I honestly thought that would work. I thought that's time, everyone.
We asked everyone to back in 2010.
Yeah, that's about what it was. I thought everybody geared their requests.
Everybody didn't comply.
Okay.
Is there, is there a way to direct people so that there's one single funnel coming into the county for public records requests, instead of going to each individual person? You need to contact someone on my departmental staff or something, and, you know, looking to find out if somebody has their ways and sit down in such and such a place or something? Is there a way to funnel all those things into one place, into the county?
You can, if the organization wants to try to create a funnel effect, and where departments say, other than the sheriff's, that their own records management division, identify a point person, you can, you can direct citizens to, especially with Trish, you could say, gee, it sounds like they're making a request for records, who asks that you go work with their members, officer for the organization, she in turn to work with us, and we get back to the assignment. If they were pleased to do that, some people will say, no, I want to make it now, you cannot turn them away. So we can, we can try to direct people, but some people may simply say, no, I don't want to use that person, I don't want either of those individuals.
But then you could fill out a form and send it to Trish, and she could take over, you know?
I don't know how many people would say, no, if we give them, here's the phone number, you need to talk to this person.
It's really ridiculous. That's our problem, but sometimes we're able to just hand them this paper, so there's no reason to build a little format, they'll have four.
I just want key records of it, and when something comes in as a request, if we give somebody something, we document it.
And we end up, lots of people work every day. I have to say, several questions are asked.
All of the, the overwhelming majority of people who use the Public Records Act, number one, they're even other using it, they just, they don't have to call what they're doing on the public records request, it can be a conversation across the counter where you're talking about a, we're talking about prostitution, someone says, boy, I'd like to see a copy of that charging document. We interpret that as a request made pursuant to the State's Public Records Act, even though they may not do an intended of that, or call it that. The reason that we advised different departments years ago to move to forms practice was really because for that smaller fraction of people who, who are making a public records request by design, sometimes of some complexity, the act of reducing the request to writing forces them to clarify what they're asking for. It also ensures that we have their contact information, so they're ready to know them things to respond, and know where to send that correspondence. So, you know, most requests are fairly expeditiously dealt with, you've got a person in your department who knows the ins and outs of public records jurisprudence, is, you know, it's probably 5% of requesters take 99% of the time to deal with them.
Mark, would it be possible or illegal, do you think, for the county to, probably by ordinance, say, you know, if you, any of our records that are subject to public records requests are going to be available to the public upon request, here's where you make your request, and just centralize the, you know, the in-game for, for where public requests, records requests come, and centralize that, so that, so that each individual department is feeling, you know, if you want to make a public records request, here's where you go.
That's what I'm trying to get to, yeah.
We could do it, your policy or ordinance, I mean, there is, there is a way to establish a framework, but it's going to, it's going to be dicey, is what I'll tell you, because you want to, you want something that's intelligible to your average person who's not familiar with the county government, and it's going to be tricky when you've got some departments who have their records person, and other departments are going to say, we use an organizational person, we don't do those ourselves. You need to find a way to provide the, what we call the fullest possible assistance. So I'm not saying you can't do that, but if we're going to have a hybrid approach, it's going to, it's going to become a little more involved as all.
It seems like it could be trickier for the public, too, you know, they don't know which departments they go to for their requests, and it seems like it'd be easier for the public if there were just one place in the county where you go to make public records.
I think if you, if you establish your framework properly, you message it properly, you educate the public properly through, print it for the entryway of the courthouse, maybe give them a policy area and ordinance as to certain mystery aspects of records management, I think that can be done and work well, because I do believe in my experience that having, well, what we know is that, as governments across the state, is that courts reward consistency, and what I'm talking about is reducing the number of cooks in the kitchen when it comes to receiving and processing public records requests. And so you can create a funnel effect, a choke point, where everything comes through to one person who's inclined to do things the same way, and they're trained to do things properly. That goes along with mitigating your organizational liability, and not just from a processing perspective, but when you get into the substantive exercise of redacting information, again, it's very helpful to have the same person with the same understanding of law making redactions, because all it takes is for two well-intentioned people in two separate county departments, each of whom is presenting with the same record, to in good faith, look at it and say, gee, I think that, you know, line three needs to be redacted for legal reasons. The person in the other department might say, line one needs to be redacted for legal reasons, line three is okay, and you find yourself in a situation where somebody's looking to make trouble there, to gain, and make money, there are people who do that. gain, and make money, there are people who do that, will see the inconsistency in redacted records received from two cloud county offices. They may choose to sit on those records for 364 days and then file a lawsuit, and we have no great defense.
So, I think we all have another engagement to head in our Superior Court here shortly, so why don't we look at this for next steps? I think it would be very helpful, if possible, to perhaps draft two checklists, one for departments that plan to handle their own requests, one for departments who want to handle their requests using a centralized, using Trish. And so we start off with some consistency. Perhaps when we come back together to talk about this, we'll have a better idea of how many departments care to handle these themselves, how many don't. Perhaps by the next time we come back together, we'll be ready for a specific recommendation for our electronic records management, and along with that, what that would mean, how that would impact this annual training. You know, if employees need to be trained every quarter, you know, where do I save this type of email? How do I know what to delete? You know, that would be a really important component of our regular training. And as a part of this checklist, it might be good to have some examples of when, even for departments to process their own requests, when do you ask Trish for help? You know, under what circumstances? What can she help you with? When does something rise to the level of needing legal review? So, does that sound like a reasonable, a reasonable centerpiece? Mark, am I missing anything?
No, it's great. We'll always help with the legal front, it's just, I think organizationally, we need to rise to the challenge of having more structured framework with more consistency and understanding as to obligation of department by department basis for the time being, and in that fashion for our partners.
So, Trish, can you and Mark then work together to take a shot at putting these checklists together? You know, I receive a request, here's what we do first, here's what we do second, et cetera. Is that reasonable? Could I say that again?
I was just going to say, it would be good if we could all have a really clear work and definition of what is a public records request and what's not.
Okay, got it. Do you have any questions?
That's where I say, what I say today, costums are all about.
And, you know, I know that this gets the public comment today, that at least one department, yours, utilizes work-only devices. Is that correct? For communications?
Yeah, we have for, I think like the Sheriff's Office, we have a county-owned piece of technology that is assigned to each deputy court or deputy prosecutor, because we get calls partly 24/7. And this is synced to our county email accounts.
Right.
So we keep all work flowing through this. So then I have personals here, which I'll give you all props.
And I would like to get to the point where we can do the analysis to figure out whether that's something we want to do organizationally, so perhaps just as another request to department heads, be thinking about how that might look and work for your department, so that you can come back with a recommendation as to whether you've got something that you think they're commissioned, you can look at. And I'll just close by saying, one of the reasons why we're talking about this now, you know, A, it's timely, but we really want to underscore that we believe that this is vitally important work for all of us to be doing. We want to understand what each of your department's needs are, so that we can figure out how to prioritize and support them. That's our goal, and do you have anything to add, though?
No, I really appreciate the approach you're taking, and I advocate multiple approaches. If you've got your own system, stick with it, good on you. If you need help because your department is small, it's not intended to have this name overload your department, but as we take a look at how we put our information together, considering the case that we're dealing with right now in column B, a couple of things for it. One, information was stuffed into a box. You know, we can improve on that, we really can. And two, how often do you get rid of files? And then, you know, I toss those two ideas out as we progress. There's no intent to create a bunch of extra work for people, there is every intent to honor a request thrown below, but if there's no more information, it's pretty tough.
Hopefully, if we do it right, it will reduce the overall burden of work. One last comment, though.
Just one more. Also, I think it's important, for those of you that I've worked with on re-carving projects or remodeling your offices and that sort of thing, I kind of try to drive it home all the time, it's really important that you don't lose sight of the physical, the paper storage that you're all collecting too, because, and I know time's an issue, but we are in a position, I get lots of requests every year for additional storage, when I go and start looking at the storage areas, there are boxes of documents there that are some dated 1993. And I know it's difficult to assign a person to, you know, purge that stuff, but we keep getting normal requests for that kind of stuff. Most of the things you, for example, you give a whole file just sitting in boxes and that sort of stuff, we just need to flush that stuff, we don't need immediate rid of it. It helps us, it helps you, because you have more places to put the stuff that you actually do, maybe you have physical boxes to keep. So it's hugely important.
You get a question for more electronic storage, too, and if you go back there and look on your J drive, your K drive, any of those, I challenge you to find old documents, it won't take you but five minutes.
You heard it from Joel first, to find those old papers, documents, and put them in storage.
I know. All right. No, no, no. All right. Yeah.